Everyone stand for the, I'm sorry, please. No. Board member Evans. Board member Manis. Board member Sorrow. Board member Smith, Sierra, board member Spies. Alright, everyone stand for the place of the.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll have a moment to stop. Next item up is amended agenda. I move to amended agenda to include request approval to submit RFP for architect services for the new K A building and insert it above or before item three G. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any nays, motion carries. Adoption of the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any nays, motion carries. Presentations. ACT scores for the minutes.
Ms. Tina O'Hare was supposed to be here tonight, but she was running a little late. And I wanted to recognize two students. We had two seventh graders last year to take the ACT and they received their scores back and they have benchmarked as seventh graders. And one was Seth Smallwood, who is at the state fair representing us in four H for Pam, his ham speech. And the other one is Brianna May. So we wanted to recognize them because that's a huge feat, even as a high school student, let alone a seventh grader. So we wanted to recognize your job.
Brianna, would just like to commend you on behalf of the board. Also for those folks in attendance that are not familiar with ACT benchmark requirements, eighteen, nineteen, or twenty. So anyway, congratulations. And we expect a lot of great things out of you throughout your high school career. Good job.
And now our very first volleyball team.
It's my honor to present to the board our first volleyball team in school history. Head coach, Mr. Brad Kinsley. Girls, please come up, stand, be recognized. Very proud of this group of girls taking the first year. And I'm telling you, it's very impressive because I think we're going to be very competitive. And I'm looking forward to tomorrow night as we play our first district game at Bath County. I also have one more group I want to recognize tonight is our FFA officer crew. I know, I think some people have really seen a lot of great things going on here at the high school. And I want to thank them as I've seen several community members that came out when our FFA sponsored our first decorate your school night. I thought that was a very huge success. If you look outside, you see a lot of different paintings has been done. Not only that, gentlemen, ladies, to be recognized. It's outstanding when you see students, leaders, steps up and does things up and beyond, recall what they're doing. But I thought it was a huge success, these young men, Lynn and ladies. I just want to make sure to get the reflex there. But the big thing is, I think it's very important that people get to be recognized for taking those extra achievements.
Ms. Beans, I think Ms. Paul was here, so if you want to recognize him.
I'm sure he's had a long day. He's been at the state fair all day, but I'm glad he made it. But he is our other student, Seth Smallwood, that took the ACT as a seventh grader and met benchmark. So that was a huge accomplishment.
Seth, could you let me know how the ham competition went today? So did you actually go through the process of curing the ham and the whole process?
Next item is reports. The vision for Menifee is we are Menifee, where students become college and career ready. Our mission is empowering future generations to be productive and successful in a global economy, where collaborative collaboration creates thinking, instructional rigor and relevance in order to improve the quality of life for all. Now our treasurer's board minutes.
Okay, our balance sheet, if you look at that, you can see on there the general fund, we ended the month of July at almost 1.6 million dollars. And that, that should speak well of, of everybody being involved in cost savings. Fund two is negative 116,520, and we just did not receive our federal reimbursement, which was approximately 186,000 dollars. Fund 21 is the 34,000, that is the schools' activity funds, and the majority of that is BOTS. Capital outlet, that's 78,000, 478,88, that is the money that comes from the state. We have half in the, at this time, we get the other half in May. So this is the account that looks like it goes in the zeros and it's all right. Your building fund, which is your nickel tax, has 235,186, that's your state part portion, as well as last year's portion of the nickel. So that's why that's higher than what you're used to. The construction fund, we still have 751,000, that's less over from the K A group improvements. You've got your debt service fund, which is a negative 2,990, but that's just the in and out and type and type. Food service is at 234,000. So we're in good shape. We still have some equipment issues, of course, but we're in good shape with food service, I think. What did they run in the summer feeding? Mr. Spencer, was it, what did he make, 40,000 dollars?
I think so.
I think he paid about 40,000 dollars on those summer feedings.
But that includes the overhead costs as far as the first thing.
Any questions on that sheet? I make a motion to be approved, you said, chief. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any nays, motion carries.
Alright, since I first did the AFR, there's been some adjustments made because we've got some more. Of course, it's due on the 25th of July, and we still have money coming in that's due to the prior year. So we've kind of increased our budget or our end of year budget by, and we're up to 1,251,000. So that's your beginning balance, unauthorized beginning balance. Now what I want you to look at is on page five, that's a total of, your budget is 990,000. Now we're going to be working on your working budget, or 9 million, 900,000. But we're on track to where we were last year, and that leaves us with a contingency of a little over a million dollars. But like I said, we will, we'll be presenting our working budget next month. We've been working on getting payroll figures in and that kind of thing. So those will change. But other than that, everything's been right on track.
Do we have any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any nays, motion carries. I agree.
You notice on here, we really didn't have anything unusual happening. Each one of the numbers on the right side are of course straight from the balance sheet. They go straight back to your bank. We did have a chargeback, but we're with that check ready, so they'll collect that money and send us a check back for that. So we had a very immaterial audit adjustment this past year, so that'll be corrected. That'll work its way out.
Any questions? I make a motion to be approved, made for consideration. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any nays, motion carries. Cash flow statement.
That one apparently I didn't print out. So of course, this is last year's numbers with the current July numbers, and I've taken out your bond funds. So right now, we're potentially looking at the end of this fiscal, or this school year, being at 1.5 million dollars, which will take us to about approximately 1.2 at the end of the year, which is kind of where we end this year. Now what I'd like to do is kind of keep us to where we're not spending last year's money. We're always growing, even if it's a little bit. So that is our goal when we're looking at the budget. We're going to try to keep that contingency.
About 1.2.
Yeah. So that's my goal, and we'll see how that goes. Barring any major capacity.
That's good though, the numbers look really good. And we've done a whole lot of extra things as far as structural materials and stuff for the students. It's still to be looking as good, that's really, that's really good.
And we're still working on that. We're doing, we're increasing a lot of procedures in finance, which is becoming possible. But it'll be alright, we'll get through it, and we'll be available for everybody during that process.
Once again, I stress to you that even though those numbers look pretty good, you're still looking at several HVAC units on buildings that have several issues, so that money needs to be there.
I make a motion to be approved, the cash flow statement. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any nays, motion carries. Assistant Coordinator report.
So just while Kelly's pulling that up, I'll talk about what we have been doing. The i-ready that we've been talking about the past few months, we've tested at both Missy Elementary and the high school, and things are going really smoothly. It's the first time we've really integrated our computer system to make it all online. And so I just want to commend Kelly because he has been working tirelessly to make that happen. So it's been, it's been really, it's going to be good in the long run, even though it's hard in the short run. And we're all learning all sorts of things about technology that we didn't think we needed to know. The we are Menifee, the power of. That's the only one I'll need, actually. So the first page is, please, Mr. Spencer, you know, actually, the very first point meeting, we have a participant, so we mentioned these numbers. And we even had, remember, teachers of students here who knew what those stood for. Now if someone gets a quarter, they can say which one goes with which. Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Is it story? Nope. English, math, and reading. So, and I was talking to a student in my office, and this tells you even our kids are getting it because this girl was in office waiting for practice and with Emma, and she said, Ms. Hacker, on my national score, it says that I have not met benchmarks. And I said, well, what are your scores? She said, I know I have benchmarks, y'all told me I have. And she had met Kentucky benchmark, but not national benchmark. So I thought that was really good, that a student was paying enough attention and noticing that, you know, and so we talked about her math score and how in Kentucky, she had met it, and the Kentucky post-secondary council sets our benchmarks. So those are the scores you kind of need to keep in your mind.
How high are the national?
Um, I can answer that, hold on.
I just was curious.
Eighteen, eighteen for English, and ours is eighteen for English. Math is 22, and reading is 22, and ours is 20. And science is 23 for national. Kentucky doesn't set post-secondary benchmarks for science. So, but I thought that was pretty good that she, even, you know, students are really paying attention to their score. And of course, parents do because that's where the money goes. So if you'll look, this is just kind of a historical look at our scores. And if you'll go to the next one, Kelly, because I know everybody loves a chart. So I really like the way this year, our scores took such a great hop, a 13% increase from 17.1 composite to a 19. So that's, I mean, when you get over, I know, I think that's. Anytime you get over a point increase, you're, you're really looking at statistical significance. So that was really good. The thing that I like the best about it, when you really start digging into it, and then your own packets, and if anyone wants it, I can send it, I can email it to you. It has exactly which content areas we've met benchmarks on. And I can remember not long ago, standing up here and saying that we only had 4% of our students meeting benchmarks and all, I mean, it like hurt my soul. And, and we definitely increased that. 15% of ours had met all four national benchmarks, including the science, and at that higher level nationally, while our state level is at 21%. So we're, we're doing exactly what we want, which is nice incremental growth. And again, this is just the juniors. So I also will get a report that shows the kids' best ACT score, but this is the one we use for comparison purposes across the state. So that's basically ACT.
What is percent taking a core curriculum, five-year test, your years of.
So you're in the weeds now. That's, that's the report I was talking about, and I can, I can share that with you all later. But that's a, there's all sorts of great data in that. It's called post-op report. If anyone wants it, just email me, I'm on the website, and I will, I will get in the weeds with test scores with you because I love it. Any questions?
Attendance report, transportation report.
You can look at the papers like you need to look. The attendance actually is pretty decent. We'd like that to actually be a little higher at the beginning of school, but it's acceptable, in the acceptable, acceptable range, what I consider. The problem is, remember, the enrollments continued to decrease entire year last year. So we're basically starting out with, you know, low numbers. The ABA, and that's why I put the calculations down there in the bottom, is actually up a little bit over what we had for last year. However, we, we started with about 50 more students last year than we have this year. So if we don't maintain high attendance, you know, it's going to really hurt. And that's why in discussions with principals, we're going to do, we're brainstorming different activities and things that we can do to kind of pump things up and get attendance and keep it up during the school year. So we're looking at a number of projects that we're doing to try to keep that number high for us, so that it doesn't hurt as much since you have low numbers. Any questions about the numbers on this report?
Mr. Hacker, if I don't, and you can correct me, but I think when we did our SPM allocations, we projected the high school to be about 310. So it was like last year at this time, the high school was around 286 at the end of the school year. Of course, we did have a large eighth grade class coming up, but we're still seven, I would predict. In a lot of words, you're going to see a decline in the number, doesn't it, the academy? We did get some news with that, that they're planning to build, from my understanding, a new dormitory up there, which may help increase those numbers. But when we first came to Menifee in 2015, those numbers were about 65 students. And you can see right now, those are 31. So that contributes to a lot. And then we, at Fox, we did, we were anticipating for kindergarten students coming in. And that class, I think, is around 26 kindergarten students, and we had 42 or 43 last year, maybe 42. And then Menifee Elementary projected around 454, because we did lose a large class, although the number was at 463. So actually, you know, considering everything, we'd still like to have 40 at the same time. I would those are your regulations.
Any questions?
And then I'll put my transportation hat on. We actually started this school out pretty decently. The only issue concerns me is one of the brand-new buses we have has a little electrical issue that we've had to take it back to Georgetown and have it fixed. It's nothing major, it's just, you know, when you purchase a new bus, you want everything to work on just right. And the way the bus is supposed to work is it has the dome lights tied in with the, you know, loading and unloading lights. So that when you're turning that switch to load a child, the lights come on, so the bus driver doesn't have an additional step to turn the lights on. So it's a little kink in the electrical work, and we want to make sure that all of us is under warranty, we get everything fixed correctly. The other thing, and it's just a good news thing, was an added feature that I didn't know, it came with the cameras. I actually took one of the SD cards off one of the cameras because I had an issue I wanted to, to look at. It's real, really nice taking just an SD card off rather than having to jerk out the whole part of the iPod, going out and get one of the old VHS tapes off and trying to rewind it and do all those stuff. And when I was watching the video, which was really, really clear, by the way, so it actually has the GPS coordinates and the speed of the bus during the trip. So that was an added feature I didn't know came with the camera that the guy did sell, did make the point to sell on. But, you know, that was a really nice feature that, you know, really liked having, so. Just an additional safety feature, so. We're looking to actually get three or four more of those cameras put on other buses that need to be replaced. Remember, we were, we kind of planned to do half the ones that still had VCR tapes in them, replace those last year, and then do the ones that were still running frequently, replace them this year as well. Those cameras are really working, you know, I can answer. Any questions?
PV stand report, instructional report, data report.
I'm not sure what order these are in. I just want to say before I get started that we had a great opening, opening day, we had a great opening to our PD sessions back August 7th when we started. We were able to do a conference-style PD session on the A, where teachers had a choice of sessions that they could attend. Some principals dictated that they attend one or two sessions, and I think the high school had several, they had to attend, but they did have some choice, at least this year, in some of the PD sessions that they had to attend. And so we do a plus delta, we did one at the very end of these sessions, and there were a lot of comments on this being the best PD ever, and especially relative to there was teacher choice and what they got to attend. And it wasn't that, we just came up with a set of things for teachers to attend. At the end of last year, we let teachers identify areas of need, and we took those and piled it into a list, ranked them, and then decided on the sessions to do it offer. So great start to the year. Curriculum instruction, of course, our focus this year is DEI. We had several PD sessions on DEI, those were attended throughout the day. We even did on opening day, we did a short, just a refocus on what DEI was and why we're doing it, and just to, you know, to say that again. It's about teaching our students to think. It's metacognition, and we feel like it's a great direction. It's the direction that we need to go in to take our students where they need to be. So that's our focus in curriculum instruction this year. In special education, Ms. Hardeman is now going to work once a week with all of our new special ed teachers, and that's not anything that she has to do, but she wants to do it in order to transition back into teaching their very first year to the highest level that they can. That's great. In assessment, Catherine talked about i-ready. We're wearing Kelly out this year, we have i-ready that he's helping us with. We're working on Grade Cam, which is a feature that we will add to our copy, where teachers can actually scan a key in and walk around if they have the app on their phone, and grade assessments at a student's desk. It's a great process. Lord Franklin and I worked today on making sure that teachers have had that invite and making sure that they are getting the information that they need, and principals as well, if we add it up here. In novice reduction, we'll talk about that later. We'll talk about test scores probably at our next board meeting, but I feel really good about this process that we have implemented. We've had it implemented for a while, but now we're taking a better look at using data to analyze where we are in terms of what we need to do with our students, and it's showing. School facilities, of course, there are several things that we'll be working on all year. And of course, one will be tonight, the selection of the construction manager. Pupil transportation, one of our big focuses this year, we'll be trying to get that vest garage. In attendance, Mr. Hacker talked about the ABA and where we hope to be. I don't know that you all know this, you've probably received the data report that we did every year, every day on student staff attendance. Food and ser, uh, food service, we have Jeff has a plot for the fresh fruit and vegetable program. I don't know if I've even shared this with you, but he actually goes into our classrooms and teaches healthy eating habits to our students. And that's, that's something, not that he doesn't have to do, but that he does. In finance, of course, Lloyd's had to sit down with most of us and help us work on our budget. And of course, we're all getting ready for the, the audit that we will have, I guess, September, end of this time. Do you have questions? Thank you.
Student learning is support items, board agenda, July. All those in favor say aye. Any nays, motion carries. August 7th. Yeah, I make a motion to approve the August 7th. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any nays, motion carries. For Menifee County District Goals Values Police. We had a, a working session, a training on the 7th, and we discussed the goals for the district, and we decided to revamp a few of the goals to better reflect where we're going as a district. The ones that we proposed were by May 2020, we will have 96% attendance rate. By May 2020, all students at end of grades three, five, and eight will have zero novice based on i-ready math and reading data. And by August 2021, Menifee County Schools will have a new 20% treat K A school facility. So we figured with the nickel tax and all of our focus has been on the school, we really wanted to include that as one of our goals for our issue. Does anyone have any questions?
If anyone restates, I think, number one, attendance rate of 96 by May 2018, I think you said by May 2020.
That's the, that's where we discussed changing it to. Yeah, we discussed changing it to 2021 in the meeting. I make a motion that we approve the goals based on our meeting the other day to four i-ready to November 27th. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any nays, motion carries. Subsequent claims, current claims, and salaries and bills for payment.
You're not going to see any kind of differences right now. Right now, they, they have done some stuff with Grade Cam. stuff with Grade Cam and iReady, which was paperless last year. They've done some other softwares, and we're right now working with schools on their plans, on how they want to spend their money. So we're continuing our process where we send them their budgets for their projects, so they can make their decisions on how they're going to utilize those funds. With all the guidance that they need, we've put up some training in EES, and we'll be available for BOTS and high school if they need us. I don't think you're going to notice anything. There's food service, which, of course, it's going to be more than last month, because all they need is summer. So.
Is there another?
I think that those are food service and those are the paid ones. And here are, here are the, like, the energy deal and, or the electric deal. Our insurance can do, we pay that. Our payments on some of our loans, just our normal August deals, there was nothing unusual.
Do you have any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any days? Motion carries. Technology activity.
Okay, but I initially saw this, I thought this was Kelly's, but then I realized it was mine. So what this is, is all of the technology expenditures have their own codes, called commodity codes. They're not actual Gs or anything. It's just a code that we joke about it in finance, or it's fine with Kelly. But they're codes that identify all technology. So it kind of talks about everything that we spend in technology, and that has to go to KDE, and that helps show we're spending our money, and entitle us to some of the tech money that we get.
So it's saying we spend it in technology and break it down to different areas.
Yes, all those stand for different things, like the three-ten-zero-zero-zero-zero is like the laptops and the Chromebooks and all that stuff that we bought. And each one of those, like, for payroll, and for the different, even if it's software, anything to do with technology has its own code.
I think quad zero is student devices.
Yes. I don't call them quads.
Yeah.
Yes.
Student structural zero.
See, he was just turning. Anyway, so everything goes in there, we send it to KDE, and that verifies that we are spending our money the way we're supposed to, and that we're entitled to the hits, the match that we get. And that was in all time?
She did a pretty good job on that.
I made the blueprint to our report. All those in favor say aye. Any days? Motion carries. Bus cost per month calculations.
All right. So this one was, I've worked on. So what we do is, when the AFR is completed, which is our annual financial report, I take everything that we spend on expenditure, on buses and transportation, take out all the salaries, take out all the debt services we pay them, take out any bus purchases, put back in depreciation, to come up with what it costs to run our buses. Now, that number is three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. That's about fifty-four thousand more than what we spent last year, but we have that aging bus fleet. And we spend a lot of money on that. And at the beginning of last year, we had to do a lot of upgrades with seat covers and things like that when the inspector came, and mudlers and all that kind of stuff. So what it did was up our cost, which is going out to our PTOs and our school, from one-thirty-four to one-sixty-seven. And it was higher than that, and I was able to remove a couple more items to reduce it a little bit more, to reduce that cost going out to the school. But that is, you know, that's the.
I hate we have to increase it. Our schools, I know we have to use this formula.
Is this set formula that you built through it?
Oh, I know.
And it's across the state.
I know, I know. And I went through it, and I went back to transportation, and I'm like, come on, you've got to have a few more miles. So, I mean, because you divide it by your mileage that you have for all year.
Yeah.
Figure out how much it costs you.
And there's several districts that are much higher than dollars.
I make a motion we approve the bus cost per month calculations. All those in favor say aye. Any days? Motion carries. RFP for construction.
All right, we got a review panel coming together. We had seven different people score these, and the scores were pretty close. But Pax Walker actually got more points in the bid process, or in the process. It was done the exact same way we did the architect. They were nine different criteria. They went through the whole book, and they scored based on their opinion. We had a classified staff, we had certified staff, and we had a principal involved.
We only had three proposals.
We had three proposals, yes.
And there was also reference checks done on all the companies, and superintendents were contacted, and, you know, we received favorable results from individuals that were listed as well as folks that were, that had previous experiences.
I make a motion that we go with Pax Walker, given that since the rule of the committee decided that they were.
Well, it was a panel.
Yep, a panel decided. And we have a relationship, I know, with him and Pax on this, so I'll make that motion.
And just remember, this is, you know, for a construction manager, this is not saying that they will actually be building the building.
This is the manager.
This would be the manager in the project. So, a construction manager project, kind of how that works is, you know, you kind of vision yourself building a home. If you walk into a company, and just walk, you walk into XYZ Company, and say, here I have a hundred thousand dollars, here's my money, you're my general contractor, you're going to build a home. Whereas with a construction manager, you've got to let them know you have a hundred thousand dollars. They will then subcontract out your properties, and then hopefully you can get it a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars. But the references and stuff that we've done with, with all the companies that were involved, an architect will typically submit a bid, they will come in and say ten million dollars, then the construction manager will look at it, and they say, well, no, we think we can do it for nine hundred, or nine million and five hundred thousand. And then your other group, then the construction manager's goal is to come in, and they want to even beat that price. Because that way, when they go on to the next client, then you can achieve that.
You can say they had a cost savings.
Say they had a cost savings.
I make a motion, please understand, don't have a side. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, or abstained? Motion carries. Submit, or be if they're architect, or so, RFP, sorry.
Okay, so I need to go ahead and get this done, so that we can be ready in September, because we do have a lot of things going on with the land acquisition and that kind of thing. And it's already sprung on me at the last minute.
And I know that you selected the architect back when you did your district facilities plan, but it's required by statute, that is, you're starting the project, that you need to look at having an architect selected. So I know you all were, the district facilities process was very smooth. So, but we do have to submit a proposal. And you have to give us permission to.
To do that. I don't do anything without your guys' permission.
Yeah, you have to propose it. All those in favor say aye. Any days? Motion carries.
Okay, this is the same one you see every year. We don't change this. It's what it is. It's forty-nine point two. It's your own medical tax. It's been like this for years. I write no change on it. I send it up, and we're done.
All those in favor say aye. Any days? Motion carries.
Okay, I am extremely excited about this. We worked so hard last year getting that nickel. So this year, we are not raising taxes. We are going with our compensating rate, we're going to get the same money, and our tax rate's going down. Our assessments went up, our tax rate is actually going to be lower than it was last year. So last year was fifty-four point four for real estate, this year it's going to be fifty-three point seven. And it's going to generate the same amount of money. So I'm very excited about that. The four percent is nothing that we need. It's twenty-three thousand dollars. It's not going to make a hillbilly from one way or the other. So we are not going to pass that cost on to our taxpayers, and I really recommend that we go with the compensating rate. I'm very excited about that. Everybody else? That was the best email I got all week.
And kind of lets you know how that works as far as the assessments in benefit county, just like she explained, the assessments that went up, there were some sales in benefit county that actually have increased the value of the property in benefit county. So when you have an assessment increase, then the money generated that comes to the school district is more from the statewide level than the local level. So that's why the compensating rate that PVA's office sends to the Department of Revenue, and then the Department of Revenue sends that over to KDA, KDE. So, once again, we, I would recommend the compensating rate.
I make a motion that we take compensating rate for our real estate taxes, and five-point-four-nine percent for personal property. All those in favor say aye. Any days? Motion carries.
All right.
Subtle aside, black car.
I just don't know what we're going to do with this. We'll see how this goes. It is a nineteen ninety-two Toyota Camry.
Nineteen ninety-two, okay.
If anybody wants it, don't be jumping. It has two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-fifty-two miles.
And an extra brake pan.
It is a four-cylinder automatic. It has manual door locks and windows, and Lord Franklin said it might have some extra, a lot of things in it, so.
Does it have plugs in it?
It has. Sometimes it has nuts.
I think it still works.
It still goes.
It gets misdirected where it wants to go. Don't be downgrading the vehicle.
I hate to get rid of it, but.
And I don't know if the car was, I don't know if it was purchased new, I don't know when, how long.
It hit forever, I'm sure.
Mike said they had two of them.
We do have two.
I need to.
Needless to say, we better not worry.
Oh, yeah.
It'll make someone, it'll make someone a bit, I mean, I mean, we can drive it every day.
All those in favor say aye. Any days? Motion carries. Revised certification evaluation for this school year.
I have to apologize for not getting this in. We had a situation came up when principals started really looking at their schedule of observations this year. We won't look at Mr. Bates. But we've had a lot of situations here at the high school for the last few years, having new principals come in. And when we started looking at his schedule, it really put a lot of teachers that would need a full evaluation this year, not without going into a lot of detail. Those are full observations where he has to be in the classroom the entire time, and there's several meetings involved, paperwork, et cetera. So we met with teachers that are part of this group, and with all of the principals to get feedbacks. And what we decided to add was a section that says, just this one year, in a year that there are multiple K-Tip teachers, more than three, a principal has the option to revise the observation schedule, if teachers agree to this change. When a new principal is hired, that principal has the option of revising the observation schedule. Now, we wouldn't do this like five years ago when we were starting with this new evaluation plan. This is best practice, what we have in place, to do two minutes, then a full, and we also have teacher input and an evaluation. We know that this is just a one-year thing, because the, our legislators are changing this plan along with working with KDE. So we're kind of in a limbo this year, where it's just a local decision, how we do our observations. And so we just wanted to make this change to, we have two principals completing evaluations. So this will ease the process for them, and then next year, they're having this one year under their belt, get aware of the process, then we'll make this plan better fit what we would think of as best practices.
You call it CTE.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor say aye. Any days? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Twenty seventeen eighteen certification for constitutionally protected prayers in schools.
And we do this every year. We got this a little bit late, so we had, we put the attachment on later. But we do, like I said, we do this every year, it's something we're required to.
Yeah, just as we don't have a policy against it.
Correct. Make a motion we approve the twenty seventeen twenty eighteen certification for constitutionally protected prayers in public schools.
What did you say? All those in favor say aye. Any days? Motion carries. Annual notes currently.
This is something I have to do every year, to stay in accordance with that KAR. Pretty much to say, we do all that we can, and nothing's a hundred percent secure, no matter how hard you try.
Yeah. Just saying we're doing best practices with the KAR.
Yeah, we are. We're following the best practice guide that is issued by KITC.
All those in favor say aye. Any days? Motion carries. Adam Barry, what's your request?
hardship requests that Ms. Partman is passing out there are involved in one family. And you probably can tell they're not filled out extremely well, so I'm going to fill you in on the details here. It actually falls under one of those special considerations. This family has three children, and the oldest has attended, I'll say, their entire elementary career, but almost, because the family kind of has hopped around. So we thought it'd be prudent, in this case, to let the children, or at least the oldest one, finish their elementary career at the school they've been at for most of their time, even though they've moved into Frenchburg. We didn't make it understood to the mother that she would have to transport them to school. However, she, her boyfriend still lives in the BOTS district, and they spend at least half of their time there. They ride the bus from his home. So we wanted to try to keep some consistency in these children's lives, and that's why we wanted to request that they be given away.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye. Any days? Motion carries. First reading of benefit county administrative policies.
Harman only has one.
Oh, I know.
It was the last board meeting in August, I think she may have had.
I had the record last month, so I wouldn't have thought any more this month. This is for the policy zero-nine point four-two-seven for dress and appearance. And if you look at number one on it, it is dealing with hats being worn at school. And we would just like to change that to being at the discretion of the school. And if you look at the wording that Kim Barker from Pa-
Basically, what's happened with the national school lunch program, KDE came back to me and they denied our application at first, said our meal pricing for a whole system's too cheap. So it's recommended that we go up, I went up a little bit from $2.75 per month to $3, and $1.50 breakfast, the $1.75, it's still said we're too cheap, but they went ahead and approved it this year, so next year we may have to go again to just be comfortable with the other schools.
What are, what is a comfortable class for you?
Right now, I have that question out.
Yeah. Just curious.
I will tell you today that I ate lunch down in the high school cafeteria and had a salad, and it was worth every single penny. So that's where we are, and then next year we. I don't, I don't mind paying the $3, or the $3.50, wherever it may be, because it was, it was top quality.
I make the motion.